Knowledge that the Northern Rockies Administration Center is located in the heart of the traditional territories. Of our friends and neighbors, the Dene Cree and Dunnezeal people of the Fort Nelson and Prophet River First Nations. We further recognize the rights provided by our treaty. And finally, we celebrate the contributions and the enduring presence of the Maiti people in our region. Please be advised that tonight's meeting is available for the public to attend virtually as being streamed and recorded. Are there any additions? Seeing none, so any public comment? Seeing none, everybody's okay with the agenda, the way it is? Good, that brings us to the committee, the whole report number nine twenty-four. Community Fire Smart Resiliency Meetings and C R I application. For discussion. Would you like to come up table, please? Well, that's for information, but I think there might be some discussion. Okay. Would you like to speak to the report? Please?
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. There was discussion of whether this should be for discussion or for information. So just so you know, we were on the fence also. Anyway, before you, it's a report. It's just to provide you with a bit of an update on what we've been doing around the Community Fire Smart Resiliency. Meetings and our C R I application. On March twenty-first, we did hold an initial meeting with some key stakeholders to discuss. And to determine whether or not there was interest in the community of initiating some Fire Smart and Resiliency meetings. Representation at the meetings is basically. Based on the British Columbia Community Fire Smart Resiliency Committee Terms of Reference, and in that they. They include a recommended list of participants. That's who we invited to the meetings and from that we had a discussion on. Committee or meeting representation, as well as whether or not we want to formalize by creating a terms of reference. So we have developed a terms of reference with the intent of formalizing the meetings as a committee or as a working group. The participation on the committee is includes key stakeholders that have direct influence over being able to undertake treatment. Apply on funding. As well as plan for some of these initiatives, like the development of Community Wildfire Resiliency Plan. And then in regards to our resiliency and investment application, we've submitted the first stage of that application. This morning, actually, it was submitted. And it includes those foundational pieces that are required to qualify us for funding in subsequent years. So that information's in the report.
Comments or questions?
Hi.
Oh, hi. You are there.
I am here.
Go ahead, Counselor Gruin.
Yeah, I have a, well, what a comment. So I have been contacted by. A local company that is very much interested in participating in this group. And so as I read the report, I really don't see. A place where this company could be included, however, he would have. Very valuable knowledge. And from my perspective, I think that there needs to be. A place for community participation. So I'm just wondering if we can have a discussion around that.
Certainly. I had the same, the same basic thought. I wanted to. First try to, try to establish. You know, whose committee is it? And, you know, at what level is the committee? Providing sort of advice? You know, I see, personally, I see that. That when it comes to the resiliency plan, that eventually becomes policy of council. So if, if that's the case, then it seems to me this should be a committee of ours. And if it's a committee of ours, I think that there's, there's a place for the public. And. So I went into how to look, and I know it's, there's a recommended, so I went and how to look at the terms of reference there, and there is a place. There for although it's very specific with respect to some of the agencies responsible for fire, it does talk about businesses and NGOs. Being appointed to this. So it seems to me there's room. For this, and you know, there's certainly there's two people I'm interested in seeing. Come onto this committee, but I'm interested in everybody else's thoughts and staff's thoughts as well with respect to. Who's the committee? Who are they working for? Because they each have their own responsibilities around fire and, and acting on that. So is it ours or? Is it a provincial? Does anybody have any?
Well, I think it's a good discussion that we can have actually, as we discussed this internally around communities of council versus what this was as a working group, and I think. Given the. I guess we'll back up in terms of a place for public or various. Individuals in community that would have a place and bring value, absolutely, we don't disagree with that at all. The challenge we had is the way this working group is. Formed and how it was kind of brought together as a group, it's. It's more of an operational committee for with those, with those various organizations. So we actually talked about is, is there an opportunity to even have it? To have a committee of council, but have it. Somehow them dovetail, I don't, not sure how that would, would work, but. Cause at this point, having. The nations at the table and whatnot, it's, 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 it's. It's not, for instance, it's, it's a joint working group that kind of collectively or collaboratively work together. So would it be right to kind of go forward and say, okay, well, by the way now. Council wants to do this with these and, and kind of. Divert the, the trajectory that group is on, right? So I, that's the only. I don't know, Lisa, what's your, what's your thoughts on that? Cause we, cause we had, we've had discussion about this. So I'm, I'm glad you brought it up, because it's something that we. We were struggling with ourselves internally in terms of where it sits. Because when we started talking around committees of council. Then basically that's when the dynamics of this group changes, because that's where council basically accepts the terms of reference, the term who's on the committee. From a membership perspective. Even specific members, not actually who'd be representing the community, but who's actually representing those various organizations, right? So. Which at first when we went through this wasn't the intent of this group. But, but something like that has to occur, maybe it's just how, I guess.
It's this, I mean, the, the whole fire resiliency thing around the province has become very big, right? It, you know, it's, it's much, I think it's much more. In the public eye than it was even twelve months ago. And for me, if, if we're going to be putting a plant together and we're going to start. Lobbying or taking action ourselves or lobbying for action from other agencies. That it behooves us to have the public involved. Right in a, in a bigger way. I mean, I don't want to have so many on there that it makes it unwieldy to handle. But I, I think all of us probably have some ideas of, of who in the public, and then it becomes a matter of. Laying out the terms of reference very specifically so that the, the committee can, can do the things it needs to do. Without political interference, I guess if that's, if people are worried about that. I certainly would like to see Cam Allen, and I certainly would like to see Sonia Labricus on this, because I think both of them bring. A couple of different things that bring, you know, an understanding and, and knowledge of what's happening out there. And they're not afraid to speak up. Right? And. You know, maybe I'm not supposed to be saying names, but I, I think they have some credibility with, with the public as well and, and. You know, I think I wouldn't want to see this turn into where there's, you know, six or seven as well as six or, you know, into a committee of fifteen or twenty, it'd be. Tough, I think, to work it, but. That's my thought. Counselor Gruin, has there, have you got some further, we, we kind of went down that path, but I don't know if we covered off everything that you're, you're thinking about.
Yep, one of theirs, those was the name that had contacted me as well. And then I would just add. Representation from Toad. I mean, it does say that the purpose of the committee is direct influence on planning and implementing wildfire reduction activities. So I think that there is a place for the political. But yeah, so I, I just think that we need a broad perspective. I very much agree that I don't want to see it turn into. You know, a committee of twenty, we've. All can cite examples of where that hasn't worked in the past. But the two names that you mentioned and then someone directly from Toad, I think would be really good additions and provide a perspective that. Not, I don't think none of us around the table currently have. Yeah, so that would be my recommendation for sure.
And if, you wouldn't want to see us on it, I don't think, because they. For some things, they would be making recommendations to us. Right? And, and so we should be a part of it if they're making recommendations up to us.
Yeah. But we don't necessarily have to have that political participation, and I kind of understand where Mr. Barry might have a concern that. You, you know, all of a sudden the committee gets off track because somebody has a political agenda and so. So I get that point, but I think with those three additions to the current representation. You know, I think that that would make for a more. Meaningful committee.
Yeah, I, I agree, and I think the terms of reference could, could probably be specific enough to cover those off. Counselor Andrews, you have your hand up, please.
Yeah, just as I was reading through it, I kind of assumed it would run as like an advisory committee, like our tourism advisory committee, because like Counselor Gruin pointed out. Like it's to have direct influence and input, right? And to help share the ideas, so I. Kind of something of council, but kind of running like an advisory board would not. Was kind of how I assumed it would go.
So I just, if I could just clarify, so the intent of this is the organizations that have direct influence over coordinating activities. So it's not to say that other people in the community don't have a place. In, in this type of work. But the committee itself is the coordination between those who have access to funding, such as ourself. Northern Fort Nelson First Nation Prophet River. They're the ones coordinating those activities, so. They're not necessarily the ones actually doing the work, but they're coordinating it. The community forest is another one. It's how do you get those people at the table to talk about? Finding efficiencies, finding synergies between the different projects that are being undertaken. So people like, I'm going to say, you know, maybe Northern Fireworks, they have a wealth of experience. But they're not the ones actually involved in coordinating those projects. They're definitely involved in those projects, but they aren't at the. Do they need to be at the table to help coordinate? I think that's a bit of the difference. So it's really those who have like the ability to apply for funding to coordinate, you know, the projects. When we undertake the update to the Community Wildfire Resiliency Plan, there's a public engagement component which those type of people would be involved with. We did discuss Toad River. And felt that at that time Northern Rockies represents Toad River as one of the communities. Similar to we would represent Coal River, we'd represent Mancho Lake. So that's kind of where it evolved from was getting the people at the table who have the means to apply for funding and coordinate the activities rather than actually doing the work sort of thing.
So could I respond?
Please, yep.
So I hear what you're saying. I'm just thinking that. If we're just focusing on those that are coordinating to be involved initially, I think that we're missing. I think that's, that's too narrow of a perspective. And I think that, that the people that we have mentioned could get in at the ground floor level and help to. Add value to discussions and decisions. That the committee is making. So, yeah. I think just to look at it from. Those involved only have the ability to coordinate, I think we're missing a piece there.
I tend to agree with that perspective. I, I think the public would be valuable here. And, you know, I don't, that's why I asked the question, whose is this? Like, is this a provincial, is the province saying this is the way it's got to be? That's the case, it's a different story, but if they're really leaving it up to the community. To, to work this committee. Then I think, especially the way things have been going with. Wildfire resiliency and, and the, and the. The understanding of the public of, of what it should be doing and, and. Then I, I think there's a place there for the public and, and. You know, and I, I think some of the concerns we might have. Maybe it can be taken care of with the, with the terms of reference. I mean, there's a, there's a, there's a recommended terms of reference, but it. You know, if this is our committee, we can write the terms of reference how we want. And if that includes, including, you know, at, at least members of the public from the business community, then. And I think we, we take that opportunity and we, we put them on there. And if the committee gets stalled somehow because of that public participation, well, let's bring them back. Let's bring them back and talk about it and, and, but I, I believe. You know, with some of the things that happened before the evacuation, right? The meeting that you attended, right? There's a public interest here. And I think it behooves us to include them, include them there. I. I, you know, I heard what you said about potentially having a public committee all unto itself. But who would they advise, right? I mean, now, now you've got a couple of committees and, you know, whereas if they're, if they're joined, I think they probably feel. I hope that they'd feel more engaged and involved in, in, and understanding. What the other organizations are capable of doing, because they're there listening to. To what's happening around the. As you call it, the coordination of, of what's happening. So, and I think there'd be some, some good ideas potentially come in. From what's, you know, what's happening there. You know, I've had a few good ideas, I think they're good ideas with respect to how we start dealing with fuel around the, around. You know, they come from the public, maybe these other groups. And maybe we'll get a chance to talk about that. Before this meeting is over, but. You know, if, if it's, it's that outside the box thinking that I think the public. Potentially brings to the, to the table. Where agencies tend to be focused in their. Right in their silos, in their, yeah, their silo or their jurisdiction or whatever. That's, that's my thoughts with respect to this. I'd like to see us. Bring a couple of members of the public in. Yeah, I thought those two, and those two, and it's a good idea to have somebody from Toad if, if we're going to be doing a plan for them, so. Go ahead.
I, I looked at this document and I see it as a, when you start looking at the various committees, various organizations. To bring together. None of them actually have. All of them can talk directly about the, have direct effect of the fire mitigation world. But none of them are in the planning world, and I think that, I'll, I'll, I'll frame it this way. During our evacuation and during the, my discussions with. Both people I were approached with, farmers that I was approached by, and the B C Cattlemen's Association Liaison. Through, through B C Wildfire. There's a, a whole bunch of us that think that if we actually planned. To do something different in our community. To create. If we were to. Create a barrier of the types of barriers that a lot of people want to see fire barriers. So if you actually surrounded your community with farms. You would actually have a lot of, you'd have a first line of defense automatically built in. And not a redundant form, in a redundant form, it's actually in a form that, that is a manageable, fire resistant, fire mitigating process. But what we're talking about then is a land use, we're talking land use changes, we're talking applying for tenures, we're. But you see, I don't see, and that there, there's not a particular group that can represent that idea, but those ideas can come. Into, under the umbrella of the Northern Rockies, because that we have a planning department, we have planning. Cap, capacity, we have access to the Ministry of Lands and Lands Water and so on.
Agriculture.
We have Ministry of Agriculture, we have access to communication with First Nation around land use things, so. I don't think that we need another person for a perspective, but I want to broaden this conversation out into what do we want our immediate community to look like? As a fire smart community. I don't personally believe that. Running around doing the fire smarting in our little patches of bush around town are going to be what we need. We need something a lot more significant than that. You cannot. You cannot expect. In an old forest, like we have lots of intersection to not, to be able to keep the fire out. That is, that's unrealistic. So I think that the shaping our community and our landscape is part of this discussion. And it has to be right from the start. So I think I kind of envisioned that coming through. Us through Northern Rockies as a way.
Well, and, and potentially through this group. Right?
Yes, and potentially through that group and our interaction in this group.
I, I have a couple of comments around the, the committee and the advisory group is. I think it's best to start with these groups. They're doing the groundwork to develop the process, the terms of reference, what, who we need at the table, it's their job to determine that. And, but it is also their job to understand fire smarting and I, I, I personally, I don't know. I think. Capacity is always an issue when you're talking to the nations about who has the time to do the work. So I think the planning department of N R M, if they do the groundwork of building the education and awareness and sharing the information on what that structure might look like. And what the decisions that need to come out of this group is, and then pulling in other people of. Farmers and, and, you know, other, other organizations, but I think developing. The actual plan, these are the recommendations around fire smarting for. A residential area, a community forest nation, like when I, I think about. Fontas, where the needlies live, nobody has ever fire smarted, they've just gone in and done the brushing themselves, so they're fire smarting through traditional knowledge. So nobody's done assessments on the, in the nation of what's actually happening. Which is probably quite a bit, it's just not being recorded and, and. You know, traditional practices have the old guys doing the work, it's just the nation doesn't know that it's being done.
They're just doing it.
Yeah.
Cause they see it, yeah. Traditionally, they've done it. Kept it in order to keep fires away from their. From the settlement. Would, oh. I see your hand up, Counselor Gruin, go ahead.
Thanks. Yeah, I put it up a while ago, so my comment will be a little bit out of context right now, but in terms of if we were. Going to consider broadening the committee, then we could do so by an application process like we do for. A committee of council, even if we decide not to go as a formal community, a committee of council. We could put out a call and ask people to fill in a, an appropriate application process and, and then we could vet and appoint. Much as we have done, that's kind of like our standard operating procedure. So that's my comment around that.
Yeah, so I, I, I think that if we. If we, because I haven't heard a definitive answer yet with respect to who owns this committee, right? So if that's the case, I think we do. I think it's in our best interest to, to do it and, and so. You know, there's, is it, so what's that look like? We've, we've got. Different types of committees that, that we have, right? So we've got standing committees, we've got select committees that are in the. In the. Term, not the term reference, sorry, the procedure bylaw that we have, but then there's also these working committees that we seem to have around that, that don't seem to be. Select committees or standing committees that, so. I sense that this one is going to be around for a while, which would make sense to me that if we were going to find it, it would, it would be a standing committee. And there's a process then for selecting people. To the standing committee and what that's supposed to look like, so. If there's general consensus with that, I think that's, that's where I'd like to see this go and, and. You know, whether we. I mean, you, we're kind of parway into it, that's, you, you've already been meeting, right? So.
So this was intended as a multi-stakeholder working group. And it's not our committee. We require to be part of a committee or lead a committee in order to qualify us for future funding. But at no point has this ever been, this is a Northern Rockies committee, and I'm not saying that to, to sway your decision one way or another, if you'd like to create a committee, that's certainly your discretion to do so. But this particular committee was developed because somebody had to, because we need to be part of one to qualify for funding. But at no point has it been agreed that this is a Northern Rockies committee that we've invited people. To join, it's. So far, we've been managing it as a working group, a multi-stakeholder working group that we happen to facilitate.
Yeah. And once we start talking about resiliency plans for the community, I, I think it, it rises to the level of a, of a standing committee. My view. I don't know, go ahead, Counselor Andrews.
So. Just in hearing where it's been with the group already. So are we still kind of working on the what and why of it all, right? Where I understand adding Toad and adding other, other places. Would that mean more of like the who and how, right? Like is this working group kind of setting establishing like this is what needs to happen? Here's all the why, we can collect it all together, now let's find out who, and maybe these people are more of the who and how to get these accomplishments done, is that kind of where we're sitting? And maybe crossing over to looking at more who and how.
So at this point, it's really about coordinating what's happening on the land base. So you've got the community forest who has a large area of crown land that they're responsible for managing, and they are wanting to undertake treatment. We have Northern Rockies, Redding Municipality, who owns property that we can undertake treatment on, and we've got the province developing a WUI plan for around the community. And none of them are coordinated, they're happening in isolation, the one, one group isn't knowing what the other group is doing, this is an opportunity to bring those people to the table to ensure that what we're doing is coordinated. So something like our Community Wildfire Resiliency Plan, that is Northern Rockies, that is not the province, that is not the community forest, that is us. But it serves to our best interest to make sure that those people at the table are informed of what we're doing. So that there's that coordination, but that is completely us doing that. If that makes sense.
I guess a question would be. Given the discussion with council and, and what council wishes are, that how do we? That's why I brought up earlier, it wasn't about having two separate committees, it was, it was the group, the group got together, I guess, organically, right? Like between. C F A and.
Community Forest, who actually wanted to initiate this after that. General meeting, they said, we need to get together and start coordinating these things. But we don't have the capacity to do it, and that's where we said we would take the lead to start pulling people together.
So, so I guess, Lisa, so technically. The fact that we're meeting as a group. Takes the box for lack of better words in terms of the requirement from a provincial perspective to meet the funding requirements, right? It doesn't necessarily meet the need from a resiliency perspective in terms of our council's wishes are specific to. Participation on a, in a committee. For the community and having their, I'll say it, just the, the right people or appropriate, appropriate. Individuals, groups, whatever, representation of the committee, so, so I guess what we need to do is. Go back and try to. Figure out how we. What's the best, what we think might be the best approach to accomplish that, given the way that, that group, that, that working group has been. The question I would have, and again, I'm just going to speak nicely with committee, though, we can do this, is, is. Does it make sense to try to integrate it into the processes you're trying to accomplish, what the working groups trying to do right now? Or do you just in fact form a committee of council specific to resiliency? That, at, at least those coordinated efforts. And that. Committee of council could have same members on it, I guess, but the terms of reference is much different. Cause, because the intent of the community, and then again, I'm just speaking out loud, I, I don't know what that looks like, but I'm just trying to wrap, wrap my head around it.
Counselor Gruin?
Yeah, from my perspective, I don't think it matters what. What kind of a committee ultimately is choosing, like I'm fine with it staying as a working group. I, and I think that the, the people that have been mentioned. Those people and a broader community perspective would be valuable, whether it was a committee of council or. A working group or whatever, and, and it could go under. Those people could be included under the N R M, so it doesn't just have to be staff, it could be the N R M staff and community members.
Yeah, and, and they, I mean. To me, the coordination bit is only just one part of, of your potential meeting. I mean, for instance, if. The, the piece you were talking about with, with potentially bringing agriculture into, to, to what a. To what a sanitized ring around the community might look like. Nobody's going to talk about that. At this committee, if they're just in their silos, the, the community forest is going to think. We just want to go around and we want to clean that up. Based on, on our tenure, we know what that looks like. But that might not be what the community generally would like to see. Like if a farmer, if a farmer takes a piece of property and turns it into farmland, it's significantly different looking. Than what the community forest. Turns it into. And yet there's this committee potentially, if, if, if the idea gets into this committee about. You know, different ways, what does it look like around the community? There's no sense of community forest going out and making a whole bunch of, of applications for, for cutting permits. If that's not. What the community wants it to eventually look like, it seems to me. And so you've got these organizations who have different. Different mandates. But if it's not coordinated in what the community wants to see. Then, then maybe you're not even talking about it at, at, you know, and, and, you know, unless. I, I suppose there is a way, and that's for us to feed it through, through the planning department, I guess, to get it into that group. Uh, I suppose there is a way, and that's for us to feed it through through the planning department, I guess, to get it into that group. But I, uh, yeah, I I'm, I'm just, I I just, I think we're on the right track, we're just. Maybe not right there, figure out, because I I think just bringing the groups together for coordination, this is more than that, and I think the public expects more. From us than than that. I expect more from it than than that.
We did invite somebody from the agriculture of community to join, they declined. So I wanted to see where this conversation went, before we reached out to someone else, but we did invite someone from the agriculture of community. And I'd like to think the people at the table or currently at the table have a pretty broad experience of. You know, and it's no offense, but somebody from the public maybe who isn't a subject matter expert might suggest something that. May or may not be feasible, but I like to think that the people who are at the table are the subject matter experts that. And that's not to say they don't have to consider public input, but they do have quite a bit of experience, and then there's opportunities through this group. Or through the development of a C W R P for the public to provide feedback and input, but. I understand what you're saying about that broader representation as well.
So what do we need to do to make that happen? Cause you're in the, you're in the phase of 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 the what and how and who and what how right now, right? So we're in that stage to include the public, so what? What would, what do you need from us, or what, where does it need to go? What do you feel you need from us, I guess, to to take it to where we think we want it to be?
So I think at this point, because it's, you know, it's not at this point a Northern Rockies. Committee or working group or whatever, it's a multi-stakeholder group, is our next meeting is in the next week or so, is I can bring that back. That, you know, we've had this conversation and what does the committee think, but I know we've already had the conversation about. Two of these groups or individuals. Um, and it wasn't a no, it was just basically, you know, to start the committee off and and the mandate of this committee or the intent of this committee. Around the coordination piece. Keeping it as is sort of thing, but I don't think there was a lot of resistance to having other people join, I mean, I can totally bring that back and. See if there's any concerns from the rest of the members of this.
Certainly, they fit, they fit the expectations of the suggested members. From a business person's perspective as well as, and with respect to Toad, it could be the nonprofit group, right, non-governmental group. Um, by getting somebody from the Toad River Community Group track to. To get them to appoint somebody to it, so I, you know, it fits within the. The general terms of reference document that you that you put in, when I read it anyway, so. So, yeah, take it back, I mean, this has got to be, because the province has said, in order to get money, you have to be part of one of these things. They've got an idea what these committees should look like. So, uh. It doesn't say the public. Right, but it does say businesses and non, and I think we we can, we can get those folks into this idea from from that perspective. And both of these people that we've been talking about. Are in the fire business to one degree or another. Right, whether it's helicopter company or or whether it's a a company that provides firefighters, they're both, they're they're in the business, and so I. I'd like to see it, you know, and and you make it term clear to them through the terms of reference, how they're to be. How how they're supposed to be acting on the committee.
Um, I'm just gonna. Just one question about the timing of the Community Wildfire Resiliency Plans. Was that, were those twenty early, what was the timing in terms of the grant application?
The grant application, well, the first part of it went in today, and then if we're successful, it starts in twenty twenty five.
For those plans, which if council. Perhaps there's an opportunity in the development of those plans, because those will be a Fort Nelson and a Toad River plan that we would have. They they would be ours to develop, and there's, there'd be plenty of opportunity for engagement of whatever form that looks like, so. That could be the establishment of a. Of a designated committee with council-appointed membership to provide input specifically on our plan and Toad River's plan. Not to say, not to say, not to dismiss at all the conversation, but that's a very valid. Point in that process to to look at a committee for input for that, those projects.
Yeah, or at least the public process to to give feedback on on the proposed plan. Right, so, I'm 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 thinking that there's enough things going to be ideas coming to this table, this group. That I'd sure like to see somebody from the public. Bringing their thoughts to to all of the different things that are coming into this this group, because I I certainly. Can't sit on it, I'd like to, but it doesn't make sense for me to sit on it, and I don't have a lot of time, right, so. But I I still would would like to see somebody from the public, so if you guys can perhaps go away, it it sounds like there's not a, you you put the application in already. So it doesn't, you've got another meeting coming, so maybe you can run it by them. And then come back to us with their with their ideas and. Okay, I, uh, speaking of the plans, I did have a secondary question to that, which is, you know, I see the both nations. Excuse me, represented on your committee, and it talks about two plans, a plan for the town of Fort Nelson and a plan for. For, uh, pro, sorry, for Toad River. So what's happening with? The Fort Nelson First Nation community and the Prophet River, are they, are they planning to do their own or or is their plan embedded in the Fort Nelson plan? What's what's the expectation or what's the group talked about, I guess, around those plans?
So we haven't talked about that specifically, currently, the twenty eighteen plan for Fort Nelson does not include Fort Nelson First Nation. But we haven't had that conversation about, does it make sense to have a, like, one plan for both communities or several communities?
Right, all embedded in the same plan, or whether each of them would like to have their, I mean, because they have their own government, right, so. Whether or not they want to develop their own plan or not, but it seems to me that if you've got all these experts at the table, they could, they could leverage. That committee for themselves as well. Yeah, okay, so maybe you can put that on your next agenda as well. Yeah, okay. Those are my questions. Who else? Comments, questions, Counselor Goring?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, good. Okay, so does that, so, um. The closed meeting portion was just really a, um, was just a, just a, a holding spot there, so we don't have anything there. So we are adjourned till six thirty. Thank you. I see, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, sorry, I was actually trying to, you know, follow my Ps and Qs tonight and wait for the media. Medium and public question and answer period.
Sorry, and I skipped right over it, I'm sorry.
That's all good, um. I just wanted to maybe add a little bit to the discussion, and this is perhaps more for my personal perspective. Um, we talked about this group having come together kind of organically and as a multi-stakeholder group, um, and then we. Talked about how legislatively. These were the the people, the decision makers and the people that could apply for funding. Um, but I really want to go back to how important it is to me as a member of the community to have others on this committee. I don't personally like the idea of a second committee, because. The capacity isn't there to expect these people to sit on more than one. And particularly the representatives that you're talking about, I think, could bring. Some fresh ideas, some new opinions, and they're not bound by legislation and job requirements to stay within certain boundaries. And we all don't know what we don't know, so I think there could be valuable input brought to the table regardless of, you know, what ends up being. Done with it, uh, so I just think that broader community, I mean, being careful about who's on the committee, absolutely. Um, like, I'm not gonna bring you valuable information on what to do for fire, so, you know, you have to have that criteria. But I do think that public engagement or that public actual participation in the committee. Um, could be valuable to it, so my two cents were, thank you very much.
Thanks, Bev.